You ready?
Yes.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Here. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome everyone to our October regular meeting. And the only thing that I have for changes to the agenda is after comments from the public, we're going to have questions to Mr. Linco. It will be number four, and then subsequently, everything else will be one number above. Nine, so that nine would become ten. Also, as we get started, I would like to inform everyone that our superintendent is not here. She had some surgery, so she will not be here tonight. But the school, or actually, Mrs. Viscount received an email from someone recently, and I thought it would be appropriate to read that so that the public could see what some people think about our school. It says, "I attended a football game at your school last night. I have been thinking about your community since we first arrived at the game. At first glance, I thought, nice facility. As we walked toward the entrance, I saw your band, super happy, small group, having a great time. I walked up to the ticket booth, super friendly, handed off my ticket to a smiling lady with a happy toddler by her side. Used your restroom facility. As I washed my hands, a young lady handed me some paper towels as if she knew me. Walked toward the visitor's side, and my husband said, looks the same as when I played here." He graduated from East Palestine in 1975. We sat with friends from my alma mater. They said, "With all the schools that are consolidating, why don't these folks?" I looked across the field and saw your fans greeting one another. I saw your cheerleaders sharing the stage with the Little League cheerleaders. Then, your team came out, barely enough to fill the team. The National Anthem was played. We all stood with respect. Your young men played as if they enjoyed what they were doing, entertaining their family and friends. We left at halftime. The score was 37 to nothing. But a perfect fall evening. As we walked out, your folks smiled. We said, 'Goodnight,' and they responded likewise. I spoke with the gentleman this morning that said, 'I believe that Sebring is the smallest school in the state. Whether or not this is true, I'm impressed. I am sure that you have work that needs to be done in order to meet Ohio's standards. I am sure that your small community is struggling hard to make all of this work. But I was proud to share time with your folks last night. I was proud to see a community commit to living a life of their choosing, a life of working hard to maintain their identity. Tony, as I read your district profile, I heard the pride of being the best public-private school in the state of Ohio. Your encouragement is so important to your community. I am sure that you feel blessed to be a part of Sebring Local Schools. My prayer is that God blesses you and your school so much that everyone in the state of Ohio has an opportunity to see what I saw last night.'" So that's really something. That's really nice. So people actually are seeing the pride and the commitment that our school has. Are there any comments by the public at this time? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Melanie Clark. I am Luke Clark's mom. He is graduating this year. Last spring, when the school calendar came out, I looked to see when commencement was going to be held, and I saw that it was held on Friday. And so then, I had written an email to Mrs. Viscount asking why, and she was, you know, she discussed it with me, and I expressed that in the past, it's always been on Sunday. And it was nice, my older son, George, graduated on a Sunday. And it was so nice because, you know, you got to get up and enjoy the day, family came in, you got to take pictures, and just celebrate the entire day, you know, for my son and the other Sebring students graduating. And just in the last couple of years, it's been moved to Friday, and I question as to why? Because I know that, I've lived here for over 20 years, and I know that it's been on Sunday for those years, and only recently has it been changed to Friday. And I just feel that Friday is so hard because people are still working, you know, it's very rushed, you don't get to spend the day, family has a hard time coming in, it's late at night so after commencement, it's not late at night, but it's in the evening, and by the time commencement's over, you have a hard time taking pictures and spending the day. And I just feel, you know, you just can't have that special feeling that you have, like I have, you know, with George on Sunday, when it's on a Friday. I've attended commencements on Friday, and it's just, it's just not the same. And so I questioned Mrs. Viscount, and she said she would, you know, talk with the board and bring it up, and she said that, then I approached her at the academic banquet, and she said she would send out a survey. And a survey was sent out, and I don't know the results of that survey. But from the people that I talked to in the community, I know everyone that I talk to marks Sunday, and I know the students feel that they would rather have it on Sunday. So I didn't hear what the final say was, or if there was a final say, or, you know, what the outcome was going to be. And so I'm here questioning that.
Mrs. Clark, at this time, I can't give you an answer because, but I will check with Mrs. Viscount.
Okay.
I think the school calendar has it on a Friday.
It does.
So I don't know if that can be changed, or, you know, because if Johnston's already been here, and have they did their announcements yet, do you know?
I know we had ordered them. I didn't know what the announcement said, but...
Let me double check, or let the board double check.
Okay.
Find out, and Mrs. Viscount or myself will get back with you and let you know for sure.
I appreciate that. Like I said, when the calendar came out, it was already on a Friday, and she had said, you know, that she would check with you guys. Because I'm trying to finalize as well his plans for his graduation, so if I, you know, but I really, I really think, like, with your letter and that sense of community, I just really feel that, you know, Sunday is the better day to have it, because like I said, it's easier for family to come in, you can enjoy the day, and it would be appreciated. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Laura Wash. I'm here representing J.P. Mohler. I was told by Tony that you would receive our document regarding the refund that your school is eligible for. Is that, but I looked at your agenda at minutes.
Oh, I couldn't hear over the...
That's okay.
What did you say your name was?
My name is Laura Wash.
Wash.
And I'm here representing J.P. Mohler and Associates.
You were talking about the diesel fuel tax reimbursement, is that what you...
Yes, your school is...
Yes, I was going to try to see if I could get it myself first, and then if I couldn't, then I would...
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
I'm Laura. It's nice to finally officially meet you. I apologize at this moment and under these circumstances. So your school had already engaged with Greg Rang before he passed away, and our company had completed all the work for your school.
Oh, it did all the work?
We did. In fact, we found, instead of just the standard refund that your school would have been eligible for, you are eligible for, actually, an additional amount. And it takes it to about $4,500.
Oh, yeah, you did mention that, and the funds that were...
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't until we completed our reporting that we figured it out. And when I spoke with Tony, she said that she would like this presented to the board so that you could discuss it. But part of the reason I was here was to pursue that, finish that engagement letter so that we can submit this, only because it starts becoming time-sensitive. Some of the retrieval that we're doing is between two and four years old, some of the retrieval is 365 days old, so, and it's a rolling counter, so as time moves, those dates begin to drop off, or those purchases drop off.
Right. But I know these other details, we didn't discuss that when we spoke on the phone. I would have brought the agreement, I didn't realize you'd already done the labor work, and you were talking about 500, and that your business would charge 50%.
Correct.
So I was going to see if I could get it first, and if I couldn't, that was my plan. That's why I didn't bring it to the board.
So Tony had said she was putting it on this agenda. Did she not discuss it with you?
Yes, she did.
Okay. So we had started, like I said, working, and Greg had agreed to work with us, that was part of the reason why we did so much work on this. So my question is, normally, this is a very, this entire situation is extremely unusual because of, partly because of the circumstance of the passing of my deepest feelings as to the Rang family. But rarely do we need to present to a school board. Normally, this is handled directly with the treasurer, so if this is something that you feel comfortable with, we can discuss this after the meeting. Yes, you can do that. Okay, that would be fine. All right, that's all I have. Thank you for hearing me.
Anyone else? Okay.
One more.
Yep.
Scott, I'd just like to kind of dovetail on what Mrs. Melanie spoke about with graduation. Sometimes the website, the school website, and what is published are conflicting dates. When you do get the results of that survey, will that be published on the site and in the paper?
Yes, we will make sure that...
Because I also agree with her that Sunday would be better for those very same reasons.
Absolutely, okay. Thank you.
As soon as we find out for sure.
Yes.
Anyone else? Mr. Linco, are you ready? All right, a few questions real quick, if you don't mind. Because the last meeting, I think the boosters had asked something about the board buying instruments and things like that, so we had a few questions asking, and I think you got them in advance, right?
Right. Mrs. Viscount did send those over to me.
So the first one, it says, "What is the average percentage of students renting instruments versus using the school's instruments?"
That really depends on the level. Right now, if you're talking junior high, high school, it's about 80% are using school instruments, about 20% are using their own. At BL, however, the students that I have in BL, it's actually the opposite, and probably even a little bit more than that. I think I only have three kids down there out of the 20 that I have signed up that are using, they're using school horns. There, it's actually been the last two or three years, it's been really, really positive down there because they have been getting their own horns down there. And those are the basic horns, trumpets, clarinets, flutes.
Other than band camp, when does the band practice?
We actually have three weeks that we practice in the summer, what works out to be three weeks. We have the full week of band camp, which is 8:30 to 2:30. We do the week prior for three hours a day, five, all five days. And then, once band camp is over, then we usually practice every day from the end of camp until the beginning of school, except for the teacher workdays, for additional three hours each of those practices. And the first ones, we work on music, getting that ready, then band camp is where you take all the, all the music that we worked on the week before and put it with the, with the drill for the field, and then after that is when we clean up all the stuff that's going on the field and put the final, final polishes on it.
Is there a designated period during the day, and is it every day?
Yeah, we have, we do have one period, well, we have one period that is designated band class. It is not the entire marching band, it is the high school band. And I mean, it's every day for 42 minutes, but that doesn't even include all of my high school band students because we have scheduling conflicts with some of the other advanced classes, so I wind up with probably, I would say, it's probably about 85% of my high school students that are in band are actually in class. Then in addition to that, we also have our Sebring Strong period at the high school, which I offer for extra. I started out trying to, trying to get away from regular band stuff and do some different things, experiment with some different groups. I wanted to try starting a little bit of a jazz band, I wanted to try starting a little bit of a rock band, but it wound up being another band class because all my band kids signed up, and they just wanted to play their band music. So we do have that as extra, and again, that's usually where the kids that are not in actual class usually are the ones that are in there during that period, so they get, they get the time they've missed. And we've had a couple, a couple new students come in through that that weren't in band that wanted to try it out, that's why I started offering it. And then, for the junior high students that march with us, they, I see them three days a week, but those three days a week are junior high band. We don't do any marching band stuff with them during that period because I usually have more students that have signed up. Like this year, I have, I have four, four or five that are in marching band, and I have 12 that are not, that are brand new, that have never, never played before and joined. So that's usually what happens in the junior high, in the junior high program. And then we also have, we also have our after-school practice that we meet on Wednesdays from 2:30 to 4:30.
That was the next question.
Yeah, for most, for most of the season, we do 2:30 to 4:30 on Wednesdays. And the question was, there was another question later, later on in a different set that was, I kind of rolled them all into one because they all cover the same topics. Why don't we practice more often? And what I've found over the last 14 years here is that we started out, when I first got here, we started with having multiple practices during the week, but I have, as the band grew, even at the beginning, when I didn't have a lot of students, it was still, it was a lot of difficulty getting everybody there. I have cross-country students, I have cheerleaders, I have football players in some cases, I have, it was a big one for me is volleyball, because I have a lot of junior high and high school volleyball players. I've had golf people the last few years. So just scheduling a time whenever everybody could be there, pretty much all the teachers will tell you that they know that Wednesday is my day. And, you know, we do have the volleyball games on Wednesdays, but, you know, my kids can at least be there for a little while on that day.
That narrows it down to just a small group.
Yeah. What I found has happened was, when I first started doing it, I was trying to do, I tried to do three days a week for just a little bit, and we do have students in MCCTC that participate. And what happened was that with the students missing for the various activities with my band, what would happen is that I'd have certain kids, about half the group, that would be there all the time, and there were these other kids that were there none of the time, like even, like there was no way that they could fit, work it out so they could be there. And then what, what I felt was happening, and when I talked to the kids about it, I asked them, and they confirmed that, was that they started feeling like it was almost a punishment that we were having practice, because they knew their stuff, they were, they had worked on it, they got it all down, and the people that needed the practice were unable to be there anyway because of their other activities. Because I've always been real proactive with working with the, with the coaches on, on trying to release them and sharing across, especially during the summer practices and things like that.
So that would lead us to number five. Is being present at the varsity basketball games through halftime possible?
Yeah, we did that the last, the last few games last year, we tried it. It's one of those things that it started out, when I, again, going, I'm starting to feel really old, but when I first started here, my pet band was, was four kids, well, actually, probably three kids and myself. And, and so, having three kids, it was everything we could just to be there, and Mr. Friend had said, you know, "We really want you there, we really want you there," and we did everything we could. And it started out being that way, and, and we just, and we had the cheerleaders were, you know, in their competition mode at that time, and everybody said that, you know, they usually did some stuff. So saying that halftime's not that big of a deal, it's just, if we do that, even with the kids that I have now, we'd probably have to, have to trim down a little bit what we do between JV and varsity, because, like, we usually try to fit in seven songs in that, in that time period. And once we're done with those seven songs, like, normal halftime is three songs, so like, by the time we're getting down to the seven songs, my kids are usually pretty frightened. Like, I mean, I was, I was, I was kind of fearful of somebody saying, "Hey, why don't you play the National Anthem too?" And then, and then we'd be kind of, we'd be kind of skating, but, but, I mean, we have done that, we did it at the end of last year. It works okay, we're just, I'm trying to find new stuff now that we can have a little snippet, like, short things that we don't have right now, little sheet music that we have, so we could play, like, during timeouts and things like that, because all we bring to basketball is pretty much full songs. So like, you know, they take a timeout, we can't play a two-minute song, you know, it just, it doesn't work that way. So that's what I'm looking for right now.
Are the new uniforms refurbished or brand new?
They are just plain used. They, they, well, I will say that there are some in the ones that we bought that were newer. We bought 75, and out of the 75 that we got, as I went through, we do, usually, as your program grows and you change things and maybe you need sizes, you do what we call fill-ins. And some of the uniforms we have, the tags are completely worn, and you can't read the numbers on them, and so we're kind of guessing on sizes what they are. And then we have some that the tags are crisp and white, they look brand, brand new. So we do have, we have a mix now of, of, of brand new versus a few years old, but we have 75, so we can, you know, kind of pick and choose, like, if we have one, it's, we're not going to be, we're not, it's not going to be like a couple years ago when we ran out, unless, unless we move marathons to get 100 new students.
They look really sharp.
They, they do. I was, I have, I have the girl that I work with on it that runs the company, that brokers those, those deals, I've, I've shared pictures with her. I couldn't be happier, I mean, the way, the way it turned out. And it saved us over $15,000. So, I mean, I mean, honestly, if I could keystone out for a second, the other directors in the area are asking me what I did. They're asking me where, they're, I mean, Western Reserve is in the process of getting the uniforms right now. They, they were in the same boat, their uniforms were purchased almost the same time that our old ones were, and maybe two years prior, and he said that they were buying, they were buying 75, and it was going to cost over $50,000. And we bought 75 for just a little over $6.
Do you know when the last time we had...
1999.
1999.
Those were the ones that we just, that we just retired, were bought in 1999.
18 years ago.
Yeah. And they're, they're, they're usually designed, like, their design is meant, they're, they're guar, they're pretty much guaranteed to last about 10. That's, that's usually when you start trying to replace, is every 10.
Did the band boosters pay for everything with the uniforms?
The boosters contributed, I believe, $1,900 to it. I had $1,900 in my student activity account that Mr. Safco had earmarked four uniforms that I was, I'm contributing to that, the band's contributing to that, and then the rest, Mrs. Viscount, contributed for the school.
And how much money annually from fundraisers, such as the calendars, fruit sales, and the Fourth of July concession stands, do you bring in?
That, you have to ask our treasurer. I don't, I don't know, she's not here.
No.
Secretary.
I'm secretary.
Secretary.
That's right, okay.
I know, I know it's, I know it's not, it's not a huge amount. We're working some things right now on, on trying to get more students involved in the fundraising activities. But the thing, the thing to remember is that until the last three or four years, our numbers were pretty low, and they hadn't, you know, we, you can't raise money if you don't have people to raise the money, and so, so that hasn't been something that we relied a whole lot on in the past.
Did the students have to pay anything for the new uniforms?
Not, not the new uniforms at all. The boosters even went so far as to, they even purchased the new shoes that went with them, that was an extra $850 on top of the $1,900 that they contributed. And then, then they also purchased the gloves, and a couple of us, actually, her and I bought socks for everybody, because one of the things that we had talked about when the athletic boosters and us got together to start planning for them, we had discussed wanting the whole thing, head to toe, everything, and, and that's, that's what we ended up finally delivering on, was literally everything, hat, hat, down to shoes.
Do you have money in your account to pay for dry cleaning?
That's used, the boosters do usually do that. We, we will usually, we will dry clean the ones that we use during the year, those ones will be dry cleaned, and then every, I think it's every three or four, we do every uniform to freshen up the ones that have been sitting in the closet. But we haven't, we, before that, it was only 38, so 75 is going to be a lot more than that.
A little bit more, yeah.
Yeah.
There was one that I, if I can find it. It's called a music instr...
Couple of that, yeah, you know, ones that I have on, that were sent to me were the numbers of dispense for the past five years.
Instrumental music, you know what that funds for?
That's band, that's band.
That's for band?
Yeah, that's, that's the band activity account, yeah.
So that's...
Yeah, that's, she, they haven't taken, that's the $1,900 that I had that was supposed to be going to that, yeah.
Sure, okay.
And I have, I have used, like, we did, we also, with that money that Mr. Safco donated, we also bought the polos that the band wears, that also went to that, and that was $700, I think, we did for that.
What are the numbers of participants in the band for the past five years?
We've been averaging 37, 38.
This year, how many do you have?
This year, we had 35. This year, we had 35. Last year, we had 40. The year before that, we had 41. The year before that, we had 36. So it's been right, it's been between 35 and 41 has been our average.
And are any of the students from the career center or at STEM school involved in the band?
Yeah, this year, this year has been, has been the biggest one for MCCTC. We have six that are from MCCTC. We have nobody at STEM. We have one student that's at STEM that was in the band, but she, she quit, so she's not.
And since band is co-curricular, is it possible that some band directors in the area have a budget that could include uniforms and/or instrument purchase?
This is a question, I wasn't quite sure, I wasn't quite sure what, what we were looking for there. I actually, I did a, did a Facebook poll.
Yeah, I think that what she was trying, what we were trying to figure out is, do schools give the band money for those purposes?
Right, that, well, what I did was, I did a Facebook poll on our band director Facebook group, and I had 461 responses of people.
Actually, pretty good response.
Yeah, I was, I was quite shocked. And I got, there was quite, quite a lengthy discussion, they were fixing questions that I had asked, and it became a little, little thing for a couple of days, but the numbers that I had, if my iPad will scroll here. I asked a number of questions. First, what size schools they were, because that kind of plays into a little bit. 40% of the people that responded were schools of less than 1,000, which were obviously way less than 1,000, but that would be in our, in our general area. The student participation in the program, percentage-wise, for student body, for, for the band age students, the, for 78% of the people that responded were between 1 and 30%, so they're all in that area. We're hovering right now, depending on the grade, we're hovering somewhere around 20 for each grade level, some are less, some are more, but that, so we're right in, right in line with that. The other question I asked was, "Do you have an annual budget for the purchase and replacement of school-owned instruments?" There was, 60% of them said no, but the next question was, are you, or, not the one, not the next question, are you provided with annual budget for, for repair of school-owned instruments? They were all yes, which we have, we have a budget for that. On average, how many instruments of any type does your program purchase in a school year? Most of them were between 1 and 5. Like, every year, they would purchase at least one instrument to get that, and then the question was, "In your situation, who funds the majority of the instrument purchases for your school?" And between about 75%, well, for 53% were school district, period. There were 24% that said boosters on their own, and then there was a small percentage, about 10%, that said it was boosters and school together, so it was pretty much either one or the other. And then there was a lot of people that, in the last remaining part, that were all grants and different things like that, which, which are easy to get if you're a larger school, oddly enough.
Right. Doesn't make sense.
But, but so, so to answer your question... But, but so, so to answer your question, in most cases, there are, there are certain things that most, most schools would generally provide. Um, it wouldn't be things like clarinets and flutes, which we do provide. We, we have had people donate to us. We have had, we've had, uh, different things. I found some on eBay. We've had people donate the actual instruments to us, which is always great, but then we gotta pay to have them refurbished and, and fixed, which sometimes costs as much as a new instrument. Um, but, uh, things like tubas, uh, baritones, which we don't have any of. We have, we have three marching baritones. We have no concert baritones. Um, we only have, as, as my ventures today, uh, went through, we only have one working French horn, we only have one French horn, period. And when it breaks, it creates a whole lot of havoc because our one French horn player was auditioning for honors band today and had to submit a video at two thirty and her horn broke Friday. So I ended up borrowing my son's French horn from Canfield local schools, where they have enough horns to give all their horn players one at school and at home. Like, they do that with all their tuba players, all their baritone, and this is Canfield, but all their tuba players, all their baritone players, all their French horn players, they all have one for school and home. Um, we don't have a xylophone, which most schools do. Uh, that was one of my questions on here. And that ninety percent of the respondents said that their school owns a xylophone and we have none. Uh, nine, eighty percent of them said that they have chimes, which we don't have. I was, I was, I was surprised whenever I first took the job, whenever I got it, cause I thought, I thought all those were just packed away for, for the summer, whenever I interviewed. And then I, then as I took the job, I was like, where's all this stuff? And, and it wasn't there. But the answer to the question is usually there, there's, there's some back and forth between the booster organization and the school. A combination of help between those, along with donations and grants and things. But there are some things that are more gonna be a school responsibility because usually they cost a lot. If, if we were to buy a xylophone, xylophone is probably the, one of the cheaper things that, that we need. Uh, it run about twelve hundred dollars. And, you know, that, that's, that's one of those, you know? Um, I know, I know when they talked to you last time, we were talking about instruments, uh, like I have a lot of used instruments, you know, that I, I've, I've found. I found a couple of resources for new instruments that are new, but they might not be, uh, the traditional brands that people go with. There's a, there's a new company that's doing a lot of brass instruments that, where I would normally have to pay eighteen hundred dollars to get one of these concert baritones that I was talking about. I can get one for about eight hundred through this company. And they, they're guaranteed for three years, just like the real, not the real ones, the regular, the regular brands. And they guarantee that they can be repaired and they have a good reputation in the band director community, you know, things like that. Like I, I've, I've, just like with uniforms, I've gotten very good at, at finding ways to do what we, we need to. When we go to, uh, our, uh, we do our concert band festival in the, in the wintertime at Hubbard High School. Um, and the retired band directors that do our, our critiquing, our judging there. Every time we leave, the one that happens to be my son's French horn teacher, he talks to me all the time and says, how are you doing what you're doing with what you have? And I said, we, we rewrite parts. We ask people to play different instruments whenever they can, you know? We, we do whatever we have to do to make it work. You know, because we don't have a xylophone or chimes or anything like that, I've taught my drummers how to play piano because we have a nice digital piano that, that they purchased when they built the auditorium. And, you know, so they play the xylophone parts on there. It's not as good as having a real xylophone, but it serves a purpose and does what we need it to do. Of course, then we go to Hubbard and they don't have that piano and they have to play a real xylophone, then they kind of go, what am I doing with this? But, you know, that's kind of how, how that works.
So, and this question is not here, so I don't mean to throw it out there. What's your biggest need for instrument? What's, if you, you know?
If I, the ones, the ones that I need the mo, the ones I need the most, I, I need concert baritones. I probably need two concert baritones and a xylophone. That would be the, if I were, if I were, if I were prioritizing a list, those would be at the very top.
Two concert baritones?
Concert baritones.
Okay. Also a xylophone.
Okay. I have, I have two students that, that my, my tuba player and one of my trumpet players is, uh, was having difficulty on trumpet. So I'm moving them over to baritone. And right now, they're playing, we have, we have marching ones that would also, that also are borderline needing replaced. But they're making those work for right now. But it's one of those things, like I, I, they're being held back from opportunities. Like, like the one could go to solo and ensemble contest, which is, uh, the organization I belong to, Ohio Music Education Association. They would go and play solos, different things like that. They can't walk into an OMA sanctioned event playing a marching baritone and play a baritone solo. They, they, I don't even know if they, they'd hear them. I mean, they, they might hear them, but it's, it's unheard of. It's unheard of. But those would be the top three.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right, well, we're gonna do the best we can for you.
And I, I know it's, it seems like a lot. And my, my argument has always been that, you know, I, this is my, my fourteenth year. And over my time, we, we have, we replaced the entire drum line. We have four, four new bass drums, four new snare drums. Uh, not the entire drum line, cause we haven't played, replaced the quads yet. Uh, we bought one tuba. I did, I did, Mr. Friend did, did, uh, get me a tuba. Um, we bought a couple of other little percussion things. And then last year, Mrs. Discount, uh, had me, uh, let me get the, uh, two marching French horns, melophones. Um, that we did purchase brand new last year. There was a really, really good deal on them, uh, which is the only reason why I brought it up. Was because I, I found a really good deal on it. We saved, we saved almost, almost a thousand dollars buying, buying a pair of them that needed, that we needed to replace other ones. So, um, uh, it worked out nicely. But it's one of those things that, right now, it might seem like a lot, but if we do a little bit at a time, like this is something that should have been, it should have been going on for a long time. But we went through a lot of hard times in the last, you know, several, several years. So, you know, maybe we do a little bit here, a little bit there. You know, it doesn't need to be all done at once. There are ways to do that. Just so you know, uh, there, there are, there are ways that you can, we can do lease purchase options and, and get the things that we need. And like if, if we come up with an idea, okay, we can do this much a year, we can figure out what we can do to maximize what we can do with it. So there, there's options.
I know for myself, I, I think you've done a, a great thing with the band. I, I can remember when there was like, you said, maybe seven or eight out there on the field.
Yeah, I, I was, I was going through the numbers last night. Uh, there, there was, I, I was trying to go back through and count. And the, the best example that I, oh, the best example that I had was, was two thousand seven, two thousand eight, when my high school, my high school band class had four kids. And I have twenty-four now. And then I have, I have twenty-four in there. Then I have, uh, I have twenty in ju, almost twenty in junior high and I have twenty at BL. And that's why I, I keep telling kids all the time, you're, you're part of something right now, you know? Uh, you know, I, I go to the gym a lot and some of the guys I go to the gym with, they, they, they're older guys and they, they, they're football heads and they, they look at their, their alma maters and their bands. And they're like, our bands are shrinking, our bands are shrinking, our bands are shrinking. How are you getting people to come to your band or stay in your band when all these other big programs are, are shrinking? I, I just do what I do.
We appreciate it.
Well, I think the new uniforms, they seem like a whole different group.
They sound really different.
Yeah, they look and sound different.
There's a lot of pride right there that you can see.
Uh, that, when we played at the Salem Band Show, um, I, I honestly, I didn't know how they were, how they were gonna go over. Um, you know, I, it had been so long since we've had that, that feeling. I mean, we, we haven't had, we, how, when was the last time we had drummers? Like, cause we, we cut drummers out of uniforms probably eight years ago, cause we, we ran out. And then, you know, and seeing them out there, you know, I, I took one picture when we were marching around the field to go over to, to start our show. And it was just like seeing that they, they carried themselves differently. They, they, they treated themselves differently. It was, it was a different, it was a different group, even though it was the same group. It was, it was a different group.
I think that head to toe made a huge difference to the shoes, the, you know, that whole.
I mean, and that, that's, that's really what it was, you know? Uh, there were a couple, you know, when I was first started talking about getting uniforms, there, I was like, you know, we'll be in hats again, we're gonna have plumes again. And they're like, what are plumes? And I'm like, they're the feathers, the feather things sticking on your head. And I got a lot of them that would be, be like, I'm not wearing those stupid feathers on my head. And as soon as they, as soon as they put that uniform on and saw what, what it was, that it, it sold them. And then, then senior night, they, for, for, for as long as I've been here, senior night, seniors wear jeans and hoodies. Like, like they, they get, they get, I, I do a hoodie for them through custom ink and, and they do, do that. And, and my seniors this year, I had one of them that said, I want to do that because, because my family, we've all done that. And then everybody else was like, no, we're wearing uniforms. You know, we, we've been waiting for this forever and we, we have to do it. I mean, it's, 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 it's a good pride thing.
No red socks, right?
No, no red socks. Judy and I take care of that.
No red socks.
Actually, I should say Judy takes care of that. It's just my bag of socks.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Lincoln.
I appreciate it. I'm, I'm talking to you guys. Like, it's one of those things that, that we don't, I don't get to do very, very often. And there, and when Mrs. Discount was sending me the, the questions, I was like, it's like, you know, I, I always assume that people know, because it's my job, you know? And, and I assume that, you know, everybody's, everybody watches everything I do and, and, and that. And, and the questions when they came in showed me that that's, that's not the case. And, you know, we should, we should do, we should do a little bit more communication.
Your life has a little bit.
You know?
It helps. Thank you so much.
But I appreciate it.
All right. So now we'll be on number five. Motion to accept the minutes. And the treasurer's report. Minutes from the special meeting, regular meeting, and the financial report for August, September. Is there a motion?
I move, accept them.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
On page three fourteen, the special meeting on September eleventh, it started at seven AM and ended at seven oh eight PM. I think we need to fix that.
Seven, we were there for twelve.
Oh, that one.
Yep.
I didn't put a personal bash for that one.
All right. Any other corrections or discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr.?
Mr. Thompson's absent.
Mrs. Mr. Harris?
Yes. Okay, number six. Motion to approve the following, the five-year forecast. Is there a motion? Everybody got it? It's on the top.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, would you, don't like to go over the five-year forecast with us?
Yes, sir. I didn't catch who.
Oh.
Who did the, was that?
I made the motion, Shuka and Robin, second.
I don't know your names yet, but also.
We're all learning.
If you'll look, I, I provided you with the sheet, this sort of a breakdown of the line item. And it's, it's a little easier to look at that. So, um, obviously line item plans. One point oh one oh is all property tax. And that's estimated to come in at one point oh five million each year. That's been staying pretty steady. So I anticipate that to remain that way. The next line, one point oh three oh is our income tax. That comes in around five hundred thousand, which is four ninety-eight, five sixty-sixth. We don't have tangible personal property. It's a one point oh three oh. I basically highlight the, the larger line items. Um, one point oh three five unrestricted grant, grants and aid. That's mostly our foundation funding. It has our casino revenue and special at preschool. It does not include career tech or economic disadvantage money. It does have the capacity aid. That is in this biennium, which is fiscal year eighteen and nineteen. I took it out and from twenty and beyond because we're not sure if that's going to remain or not. So that's why you see it in twenty going down to four point oh four two from five point three million. One point oh four oh does have the career tech and the economic disadvantage and also catastrophic age. Career tech, we've been getting seventy-four hundred dollars a year roughly. And economic disadvantage, we're getting three hundred sixty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-seven. Catastrophic, we've averaged about five thousand. Last year, we didn't get any. I estimate that at five thousand because generally there, there are some that you can get reimbursed on for that, but it's not usually a lot. So I put the five thousand for that. The next one point oh five oh. That's homestead enrollment and it's got some tangible personal property reimbursements, but that's being phased out. So you see that line item going down throughout the forecast to account for the phasing out of that. And one point oh six oh is all other revenues. That includes our open enrollment, um, interest on the bank accounts. Um, money coming in from any class fees, special ed tuition, SF-14 tuition. SB six, which is a grant. That's been bringing in about nine thousand dollars a year. Um, the miscellaneous includes Medicaid, which is the biggest portion of that. And that's been keeping that stable at about ninety thousand per year. And it's, my understanding that there may be a donation coming towards resurfacing the gym floor. So that's, I put twenty thousand there for this, this fiscal year. The open enrollment line item, I have that gradually going down just because most schools are experiencing some declining enrollment right now. Let me switch over to expenses. The biggest is always salaries and fringes. I broke down salaries with all the different classifications of employees. Um, certificated, classified and administrators. I also include the subs, any supplementals, the board, overtime and trips for the bus drivers. With the current negotiated agreements, classifieds getting thirty-five cent an hour raises for the three years of that. And the certificated's getting one point nine percent. I carry that throughout the entire forecast as an estimate. And retirement and insurances, retirement and Medicare always coincide with salaries. Um, our insurances, I continued what Mr. Rank had with a twelve percent increase in medical premiums per year. And with the current situation with, um, Affordable Care Act being up, up in the air and Mr. Trump just ended his subsidies related to that. I anticipate that insurance companies are gonna have to raise their prices. So I kept that going through the whole forecast. The surcharge that I have labeled, that is SERS surcharge that's typically, you typically have that every year and it's running about eighteen thousand. Unemployment at this point is low. I estimate that at five hundred. Purchase services is another good line item. And I tried to break that down on the basic things that were included in that and I put one percent in for inflation. Those are things like, that's the open enrolled out instead of open enrolled in for the revenue. Your utilities, um, we're expecting to have a roof repair fiscal year nineteen. Um, bus maintenance repairs, which are very low returning fees. This year, that's running about fifty-five thousand. Um, nursing services, any professional services, maintenance and repairs running at eighty-three, six fifty-two. Professional development for meetings and so forth, that's running at thirteen thousand. And our fees to access for our technologies, thirty-one, five seventy. And I put the, the one percent for that to gradually increase. Then we move on to supplies. In the short time I've been here, I have learned that there's a need to upgrade the security cameras. And the administration's been looking at possibly doing the high school this year and elementary the next year. So I put twenty thousand for eighteen and twenty thousand for nineteen. Also technology, they were discussing the need for some more Chromebooks at the elementary. And then in twenty, I put the eighty thousand for that because Microsoft is no longer supporting Windows. Actually, that's stopping this year. So the computers we have reviewed upgraded and we'll actually have to find a new ones because we're beyond the point that you have. MOE stands for maintenance of effort. That's a little hard to explain. With special education as, as an example. When you, that's a federal grant you get. And, well, what they say is, when you're getting that money, they don't want you to replace general fund expenses with that. They want you to continue spending as much in general fund as you did the previous year. So in order to maintain that, I put in the two hundred and fifty thousand. Right now, we're in danger of not needing maintenance of effort from fiscal year sixteen to seventeen. So we may have to, I foresee us having to pay that back to them this fiscal year. And then, you know, you either spend it or you pay it back. So it's better to spend it, because if you pay it back, then you risk losing your other special education fund. But that's where I added the two fifty, nine sixty-nine. Basic supplies is a hundred and eighty-five, put the two percent inflationary factor throughout the forecast. Now, one thing that's, a supply is really something, anything that's under twenty-five hundred dollars. Okay, if it costs twenty-five hundred dollars or more, it's considered equipment. So I put the computers in this, because computers don't cost that. So when I move on to equipment, that's for big stuff like the buses. So I talked to Mrs. Discount and decided to put a bus in for fiscal year nineteen and for fiscal year twenty-two. And I put in twenty-six thousand just for basic equipment that may come up. Basically, that puts us at, throughout the forecast, we would begin deficit spending in twenty-twenty, which is spending more than they're bringing in in that year, but we'd be living off our parry over balance. But that is a trend that we don't like to do, but overall, the balances are staying pretty strong until you get to twenty-twenty-two, where it goes down considerably. But primarily, that's due to the lo, possible loss of capacity. Because that compounds itself. Do you have any questions? I'll try to put details too, and assumptions.
Good job. Yeah, thank you so much. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Flowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes. All right, seven. Motion to approve the following. Enter into a one-year service agreement from October one, two thousand and seventeen through September the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, with Sebring Athletic Boosters for groundskeeping. Be stipend of five thousand dollars for building and grounds custodian from October the first, two thousand and seventeen through September the thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Go ahead. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Flowers? Mr. Harris?
Yes. Item eight, motion to approve the following donations. Rubbermaid donated lunch kits to the entire student body and staff. And art supplies of Bonnie Nanski were donated by Sheila Strosser to the art department. Motion?
Motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Flowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And number nine, motion to grant the following. One-year limited contracts effective with the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year at the current salary schedule. Hillary Stokes, substitute teacher, and Melinda McCoy, substitute educational aide. And be one-year supplemental contracts effective with the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year at the current salary schedule pending proper certification. Jason Whaley had softball coach Greg Martin, yeah, or Gary Martin had baseball coach, and Joseph Fry, first assistant baseball coach. Reassign Carly Jackson from third assistant volleyball coach to third assistant basketball coach, girls. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes. All right, and item ten, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Seconded?
Second.
By consensus, this meeting is adjourned.